Ready?
Ready you are.
All right. Call this town of Vinyl Haven Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, April twenty, April eighteenth, excuse me, twenty twenty-three to order. We'll call Jake Thompson, Leslie Dyer, Dong, myself, Pam Alley, Marjorie Stratton, Town Manager at Lives Bunker, Debbie Town, I've taken minutes. Prove the agenda. Do we have any additions, contractions?
Well, I just got this, the email that she said, she asked me to pass it on to the board of selectmen. The correspondence about the.
Charging station?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I move. We prove the agenda is presented. All those in favor. All right. Number three, approve the minutes from the March twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-three Board of Selectmen's meeting. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
I wasn't at that one.
Number four, approved and signed treasure warrants, number forty-two, so moved. All's in favor. Good. Uh, number five, communications, Sea Level Rise, Spirit of America Foundation.
Um, this is a letter from the Secretary of State congratulating the Sea Level Rise Committee on their uh, twenty twenty-two Spirit of America Foundation Award. To acknowledge that.
That's cool.
Um, the second letter is from the Maine Lobstroms Association. It was just a thank you letter uh, for our donation of a thousand dollars. And a letter from Maine Coast Heritage Trust uh, explaining their payment in lieu of taxes of five thousand dollars.
Assuming the assessed value might be changed this year, or is that?
Is the assessed value of the Maine Coast Heritage Trust uh, properties going to change?
Is the assessment gonna happen again? This isn't, are we going through that cycle now?
Oh, they don't, they just pay whatever they want, because they're.
I know, but it says in here, if you would let us know if the assessed value of these properties had changed, so we can adjust our payment and taxes accordingly. So sounds like they're willing to pay a little bit more if the valuation had gone up.
I can um, talk with um. Try to.
Thank you.
Is he here, is he here this week, or?
Yes.
Okay, six speakers from the floor.
Um, I wanted to, I would just make a semi-commissioned um, mention, but I could do that later, if that would be more convenient.
Wow.
But now it's fine.
Okay, well, we had a meeting the other night, and I just um wanted to bring up that we tried to think about what could be done about the empty buildings, other commercial spaces on Main Street. We've um, pretty much understand that we can't rent them, you know, to force people who have commercial spaces to rent them. But um, Matt Eddie pointed out, man, we're working with, you know, the professional planner that since so much is going on to, to revitalize and work on Main Street and improve it with the sidewalks and street and everything. This is a good time to ask the people who own all these empty buildings, what their intentions are. And he, I mean, I've been hearing from people, and I think other members of the planning commission are concerned, wondering what can be done. There's no place to gather, there's no place to eat, the empty storefronts, it's just really sad. So um, the thought was maybe you all would wanna write a letter to the people who have the empty commercial spaces and ask them what their intentions are. And if, and explain that, you know, it used to be a very lively Main Street, and now it's not. And there's a lack of economic viability and concern in the community about what's happening to our Main Street. I don't know whether it's something you all would do, but it came up at the meeting, and I thought I'd just pass it on to you.
Um, this is in reference to that vacant building um.
Vacant buildings.
Buildings proposal that came from uh, Phil Crossman and a other few other people had come, do you remember?
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
I I don't know why it would wouldn't hurt, I suppose.
How many owners are we talking about?
One, especially.
But I mean, there must be, there must be three or four buildings on Main Street that.
Well, two of them are owned by the same person.
Yeah, but the Star Hope Foundation buildings are empty too.
And I don't know if the goal of this be, I mean, I'm probably the one that's gonna end up writing these. I need to understand what the goal is here. I mean, is there?
Yeah.
Maybe ask if they've ever seen the downtown master plan and ask if they have any thoughts on what their ten-year, five-year plan is, since we're investing all this money to rehab Main Street and make it look better. We'd like to.
And function better.
You know, since Main Street's gonna be all redone, we'd like the the buildings to, you know, not be empty and be contributing back to the community. I mean, I don't, I don't know, that's kinda what, isn't that what you're getting at? And that's kinda what I'm thinking, but I don't know.
No, I agree, this.
I mean, it would be nice, once it gets, the project is complete, that somebody would say, oh, our places look horrible, and the place, everything else looks great. We should, you know, it's time to do something, but who knows what the plans are for.
Yeah, I mean, the Star Hope must have some kinda plan for their two or three buildings down around Main Street. I would assume by now, I mean.
Are they still in litigation over the assets?
They settled somewhere.
What do they own down there, besides?
They own the one that's right by the bank. They own the sale, they own, they own the sale lot, which isn't technically on Main Street, but I mean, they own that, don't they own part of that grass lot too?
Yeah, they own that corner.
And they have that yellow house.
So they tech, they are on Main Street.
Yeah, the one that Matt had said.
They're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, there's four properties that are pretty much on Main Street.
Yep. Uh, I mean, my I'm not opposed to it, but I also don't I mean, if I was the property owner and I got a letter from the town, like I can do whatever I want with it, basically, that's what we have no the town can't force them to do anything.
They can't turn them into living quarters, because that's against.
Right.
Policy, but I mean, they must have some ideas, quite a bit of capital tied up, you think?
Yeah.
I would like to see the people first.
That's what, yeah, they're yeah, like Donnie said, what are they, I mean, if they're waiting for Main Street to get fixed up, you know, do they have a plan for to, not this summer, next summer, but you know, in twenty twenty-five, what's their plan? I mean, if you send them a letter, it doesn't mean they have to respond, but at least it might get them thinking about doing something, maybe, I don't know.
I would say, yeah. Doesn't matter to me.
Does the board, do we want to draft a letter and send it to them?
Is it worth a letter, or just asking to meet with them and ask, just ask the questions, you know, hey, have a back and forth discussion with the downtown plan?
Well, we've been meeting one-on-one with all of the property owners, either on Zoom um or in-person, talking about the easements. So we've um it was more the engineer and Gabe McVale and myself talking about their properties and what's going to happen with the downtown project. I would rather have those conversations during the easement process, rather than write some sort of letter that goes out to every proprietor, property owner on Main Street.
That's fine, it makes sense.
What did, that makes sense, of the easements still being signed?
Um, a majority of them are signed. We're still, you know, people have a lot of questions, which is fine, and we're trying to accommodate those people uh, and um you know, make little adjustments, like with the um what's this, the Island Closet, Gus.
Oh, but, but.
Gus Bickford, um you know, we're just talking to him about, you know, what are the steps gonna look like, and what is the railing gonna look like? Those are things that we can make accommodations to what their liking is, you know, it's not gonna affect anybody but them, so those kinds of final discussions and uh, easement discussions are things that we're having.
So the, the vacant properties, are they, are those easements, have they been signed yet, do you recall?
Uh, I believe that Mr. Wood and his wife signed the Harper Walker lease, or uh, easement, rather. Um, what other ones are in return?
Um.
Salt.
The salt and the.
Oh, we haven't yet gotten those, but we're still um, in discussions with them.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like in the Harper Walker, the Downtown Market, the Old Deli, and Salt, those four buildings have all been empty for a couple some, well, basically empty for a couple summers, yeah. Yeah, that's, that one's owned by.
Star Hope.
Star Hope, yeah, the, where Margery, are they, not, was that her name? Yeah, yeah, used to have a shop, shop, yeah.
And lived in it for a while.
Right. Yeah.
Well, if there's still some easements with those property owners, and you're gonna be having more conversation with them, we would appreciate asking what their intentions are, maybe after the downtown project is finished, if they have plans to open up something.
Mm-hmm.
Um yeah, I don't, sending a letter, I don't, I
I mean, I didn't realize there were still conversations. If you're having a face-to-face, it'd be easier than sending them a letter, so.
Yeah.
I'd be more for that than sending a letter.
You had better discussion, probably.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Marge, if you're willing to take the time to do it, since you have to talk to them anyway.
Right, I mean, sometimes it's me and Gabe, sometimes it's all three of us, uh, sometimes it's just the engineer, you know, it just depends on uh uh, I usually go to the in-person ones that are here at the town office, uh, just to, you know, stay more involved, but sometimes they do have Zoom meetings, and I don't log on to some of them, but um I mean, all the conversations are good, you know, constructive, and uh you know, we're just trying to answer their questions and make adjustments where we can, and if we can't, you know, just try to talk to them about what we, what we need to do, and hopefully, hopefully move forward.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's maybe the best way to go about it first.
And there's still plenty of time to reach out and later date.
Oh, yeah.
We need to, if we don't get an answer, so, okay. Um, any other speakers from the floor?
Um, I was wondering about storing cars and boats and stuff, that would be considered a business, right? Storage unit of some sort.
I mean, like what they have on the mainland, what they build like?
Well, I mean, they have uh, some sort of building, and that they, you know, advertise and store cars and boats for summer residents or year-round or whatnot, that would be considered a business, right?
Yeah, if it's permitted for that pers- purpose, yes.
Okay, um, I was wondering why my neighbor Jim Cogswell does not have a building, like a commercial zone permit for his business of storage unit. I'm wondering if that was, I just didn't know if that was considered a business? And that's why it doesn't have one, if it's because commercial? I mean, for years, he's had, he's stored vehicles and boats and has advertised and has had different people do it. And I was just wondering if that was commercial zone permit and all that.
I have no idea what.
Where's the, what's, where's the property? I don't think, I don't think.
Past my, um, one forty-three P Quat Road, Ed Whitworth's whole place.
But I don't think it needs to be commercially zoned, because it's a, it's not a commercial business, it's just kind of a what are they, what is it called when you do business study house? What was that?
Home occupation.
Home occupation business, like.
I don't know, I'd have to look into.
I would guess, I mean, it doesn't have, for those, it doesn't have to be commercially zoned, run one of those, so I have no idea. That would just be my guess, what, what? It wouldn't necessarily have to be commercially zoned.
Right, there is that option thing.
To the zoning ordinances and stuff, that was, Ed Whitworth built that, that did have an auto repair shop, it's no longer that. Jim does have the buildings, and he does store cars. And his part, because of Ed Whitworth prior to everything, it, his part right there is considered commercial.
Okay.
That's prior to.
That's prior to the current ordinances in place, so it was grandfather-in, essentially.
There's seventy-two or three, or even four.
Okay.
Yes, my grandfather did do that, but now, so my question would be also, um, so is that, does he have a commercial zone permit?
I, I don't.
Do you have to renew that? Do you have to renew that one every year? I mean, we had, we had gotten on one forty-three a commercial zone permit. And then we're asked to get another commercial zone permit, so I'm going, okay, so you must renew those once every year, right? That?
Is that our?
So if that's the case, then I'm just trying to figure out, you know, commercial zone permit, do we need to renew that every year?
Okay, what did you start off with? You, you had a commercial zone on?
Yes, we applied for a commercial zone permit, then got um, accepted, we have a commercial zone permit. And so now, what I'm trying to figure out is, do you have to update your commercial zone permit every year?
Never heard of it. What is a commercial zone?
I thought if it was zoned commercially, it would stay that way. I just assumed that it would stay commercially zoned.
I was wondering if I could see that commercial permit. I don't remember any, any of it, nearly record by now.
I was required to get a permit to store materials for my business.
And we had to have a commercial zone.
Apply for a commercial permit last year.
No, that was not.
Question is, is, does Jim Cogswell have a permit to operate his business, and why doesn't he?
I would think this would be a better conversation for the planning board, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's because we aren't the planning board, I have no.
Yeah, no, I understand that, yeah.
Well, face here, why didn't we ask her?
She's not the planning board, she's the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, and now some fractional of the code. Will be running a business.
Is he in, is he in violation? I don't know, I'm not on the planning board, I don't know.
And no, why is it?
Why, I would suggest we that you present, that go to the planning board and ask them, and you might wanna have Jim, I mean, can't talk about it. I don't know what Jim has and what he doesn't have, so.
Okay.
We asked that question before we board last meeting and got passed along.
You mean, you mean it got tabled?
No, because nobody actually answered my question. I asked if Jim had had a permit, and um nobody answered my question, but it was very I probably didn't speak clear.
Jim's property is grandfathered prior to the ordinance.
But the, my, what I didn't, I don't understand the permit thing, but I thought like if if somebody, like a, um, JoJo, for example, just using him for an example, with the Island Lobster Supply, that was zoned commercially for him to have that business, correct? He doesn't have to renew that commercial, that's, once it's done, it's done, so.
I would, that also was done prior to the ordinance, we built.
Right, so I'm just assuming that if that was, it would be the same for anybody that has a commercial zone.
Property is commercial zone.
It, you don't.
You don't have to try to go through and get it, get it.
I don't think so.
Does that, commercial zoning uh, permit apply to a specific activity, or is it general?
It was specific to Jim, for Ed Whitworth, and for Billy Thomas. To Marjorie.
Marjorie.
Um, I just don't think uh, that this is an appropriate conversation for us, but if Billy wants to come in and talk to me and fill out.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
That's fine, I didn't know.
I can research it for you.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Move on to seven, committee and department reports and appointments.
I have a question.
Okay.
I received all the documentation from Drummond and Woodson for what the town spent to pursue my case. The figure came out to just a little over ten thousand dollars. Now, in the November twenty-ninth meeting, you and Mr. Thompson said that the town had spent nineteen thousand dollars pursuing my case. And my question is, is, who told you the nineteen thousand dollars that you felt so confident to defame my character in front of this entire town?
I'm sorry, to fame your character? How to be, fame your character?
This is all part, but we're not even discussing the ship, I mean.
Marjorie.
You know, you and I have had this conversation a few different times. I explained that I was the one that said that it costs, I don't know what it was, eighteen or nineteen thousand. And I showed you the piece of paper that I had. I had documented all of the Drummond and Woodson invoices.
Right here.
And some of the invoices that I had said land use violation. I made the incorrect assumption that the ones that said land use violation were also for your properties, but the only ones that were for you were the ones that said uh, Cripple Creek. So those invoices, and I believe I've given you copies of the land use violation ones and the other ones, so you have everything. So that was my error. I don't, I don't recall, I mean, I'd have to go back and listen to minutes and videos, but I don't recall that either BW or Jake said that. I said that at a meeting.
No, they specifically said that, that the town had only received half of the money back from me.
Okay, then I don't, that's, I can only speak to what I remember saying.
Good.
So I can't speak.
Can I interrupt, please?
Yeah.
Um, we are on Article seven of the agenda. The next um coming up in this article is, A, what an incurring status report. We're not talking about anything to do with your property at this point. We're following the agenda. If I might say that. Is that okay? Usually you follow the agenda. Where you are talking, land um, is on, in the next um, bullet eight, old business, it's on the old business.
Okay.
So if you can wait until we get through, that'd be good. Thank you. Okay.
Seven, committee and department reports and appointments, A, what an incurring status report.
Is there an agenda? There are agendas over there, Dana, if you'd like to.
Right by the door.
Then we see.
Uh, so the uh, transfer station project is ongoing. If you've been out there, then you can see that it's, you know, it's construction. Um later on, I, I would like to review uh, some of the uh, change order requests that are going back and forth, and um possibly get permission from you to just change, as long as I don't go over the approved budget to uh, sign the change orders, but we can talk about that later on. Um as it says here, we've continued to work on the easements uh, to try to, once the easements are done and the attorney signs off on the easements, then we can um we'll get closer to the going out to bid uh portion, the EDA portion of the downtown project, so. Um we, as it says, we continue to meet with stakeholders and have discussions about the easements. Uh, does anybody have any questions about any of the ordered incurring items?
On the transfer station, I'll be on schedule, is it a complete before, hopefully, end of June?
I mean, I was up there yesterday, not yesterday, I guess, because they weren't open about two days ago, and it seemed like, I mean, they had a lot of those cement blocks set up, and seemed like they'd gotten a fair amount of the stuff. I mean, it's not like they're not, then they were out here working today, so it's.
The hull and a lot of stone.
No, I know that, I saw, I mean, it's gonna look a lot different up there from what I saw, but I mean, it does look like it is progressing. I don't know if it's on schedule or not, they probably won't know until yeah, they've only been working for about a month now, maybe, not even.
And I've been telling people, I know it's frustrating having all the dump trucks in line, but just be patient, because they're working on the transfer station, it really needs to be done.
It could be July.
Be July.
Until the downtown.
I know, and I also see that too, but, you know, I mean it's, it's desperately needed work that needs to be done, so.
Right.
Yep.
Just be patient.
Great.
I do have a question, though, on the uh, on the anticipated work for the next two weeks. And the question goes back to a question I had earlier about Grimes' pack, what are we doing with a draft concept plan for private property?
We're not, we're not.
So why is it here?
It's on there.
They've included it.
Why don't we take it off? It should not be there.
They, they submit this, so it's nothing I can.
Yeah, it's submitted, I think it's just work they're doing in the town, if that's agreed, this is not actually town.
And it says it's not town, in the thing, in the report.
Says American Legion.
It says American Legion owned.
Yeah, I know, but it's a draft concept plan for it, I mean, that's not even.
But this isn't, this isn't anything that we generate, Donnie, I mean, it's not. But if you could ask them to take it off, I guess, but.
It does, yeah. In my opinion, it doesn't make a difference, but we can ask a question. Any other questions on seven A? All right, seven B, Housing Committee.
I will send you all a cover letter and the document that I hope you want to read. Um, the Housing Committee can't uh, raise money to build housing on its own. And we've learned from other communities that the only way to move forward building housing is to be a nonprofit organization. So we can apply, sorry about my voice, for state and federal money. And the only way we can do that is form an nonprofit organization. So I've been working on the IRS application. We have um, approval from the state of Maine, but we need an IRS application to be, have nonprofit status. The IRS application for housing is for relieving distressed, the distressed and the poor. And for that, you have to be supplying very low-income and low-income housing, pretty much only, with a little bit of latitude for higher, higher-income housing. But there is an exception, and the exception is to, to lessen government burden. All the other housing groups have done this, the only way we can raise money and create workforce housing is with this exception. And that has to be attached to the IRS application. I've been in touch with other um, nonprofit housing groups, and the one that Mark Freemo from Genesis Fund put me in touch with, or put us in touch with, is Midcoast Regional Housing Trust, and they um gave a, they had a resolution that they wrote up for this municipality of Rockland, which was signed and approved, and I modeled what I've been doing on theirs. But of course, from our ordinance and from our comprehensive plan, and the documents that we have in the assessment, all the documents that we've created here on Vinyl Haven, I put in this document. And I had um, them look at it for me, just to make sure I'd done the right thing. They said it looked good, looked like, I think, just what the IRS is looking for. So if you're willing, I would really appreciate your signing this, so that we can attach it to the IRS application, get nonprofit status, and hopefully apply for state and federal funding. Build all levels of housing out there.
Is this something that we can just vote on now, or do we have to have a special town meeting, so people can come and discuss this, or?
I just, I'd just like to run it by the attorney real quick.
Yeah, that probably makes sense. I wasn't sure, this was one of the things that we need to, you know, have people come and.
Oh, no, I wouldn't think so.
I wasn't sure how it worked, if it was an IRS, if we were signing something for the IRS, or?
Just independent.
I know, but I mean, you're gonna send it to them, right?
Yeah, well, it's just to say that we are relieving the burden you have in creating housing for the community, because it's a, it's something that you all have been involved with and concerned about. I mean, every meeting I come to, I hear about how we need workforce housing, and there's no place for the teachers and the doctors and the the um, law enforcement, and that's, that's what workforce housing is. That's not what we were initially thinking about, but it's obviously a, a great need. So we would like to be able to, yeah, to do that too, not just, just that, but everything. And the only way we can create workforce housing is with this document.
So this is independent from a prior uh opportunity with Pinkerish, then?
It's not a, it's not a different, this would be for the Housing Committee to have the right to raise money. Pankist is a separate organization. If, if the town approved their building out here, then Pankist would be paying for everything. We wouldn't be raising money. That's up to them, their, their professional outfit. We'll have to do all this on our own, but this doesn't mean that we don't wanna work with the town, but it gives us the opportunity to raise state and federal money, and not be asking the town for money.
So the town would in effect be able to control the uh regulations concerning who can. Regulations concerning who can come in and who, uh, and, and the running of the operation?
Well, we would be creating housing for year round island residents of certain income levels. So it would be for islands.
Marge.
So would the housing committee, um, be? Uh, stop operating?
If, if, if we got the nonprofit status. It would become a separate nonprofit organization, but still working in partnership with the town and other island organizations.
But it would be a separate legal entity from the town. It wouldn't be a committee of the town.
Right. But I'm assuming you would prefer that because otherwise we can't, we can't raise money.
Right.
To do any building. I mean, if you want more housing here, it either has to be with an off island developer, it has to be with a nonprofit. And the community development corporation thought about including that, what they would do, but George said that's just too much. They would like to help us. But they can't do it. They have other things that they're thinking about.
Yeah.
Would the town still have a say about where it go with different things?
Yeah, well, first of all, um, there, you'd have the zoning, which would control it. But also in the, um, work we've been doing with Matt Eddie, there's something called contract zoning. So if a larger development was. Being thought about for the community, there'd be a public meeting and it'd have to be a public presentation and the community would have to vote for it. So it wouldn't just happen, but anything that meets our current zoning wouldn't have to be approved, but that would be, you know, multi-family housing or something that would be. You know, individual houses, maybe six houses, six multi-family houses with a playground in the middle or something. That's sort of what we've been thinking about, cause there are families that need housing, but there are also single people and elders. I mean, my thinking is that a bigger complex for single fam, single people, couples and elders would be one thing, but families need. Other kinds of housing.
I would have no problem signing this as long as you ran it by the lawyer first, I think.
Do you know how long that would take, Marjorie? Cause we wanted to start applying for something soon as we get approved.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not familiar with it, so I'm, I'm personally uncomfortable, a little tiny bit uncomfortable. I'd like to just get the attorney's opinion and. But if you're comfortable with it, that's, it's a selectmen decision, not mine.
Do you wanna see the one from Rockland? Would that help at all?
Like a bass around.
I mean, yeah, it's all new. Yeah, I was gonna say. Sounded like, um. I know I talked to you one other time, quite some time ago about. Um, about the fact that maybe you, the housing committee wanna. Might wanna think about doing the nonprofit and suggested. That I'm talking to the North Haven folks, so you did and.
We've talked to so many people, Islesboro, North Haven, Rockland, Belfast, all over the place.
Stoneington as well.
Oh, yeah, that's.
So I think it sounds like a, a good idea personally.
I'll get a lot better than I do with Pinker's.
I agree.
Well, it's not one or the other. It's, it's, it could have everything.
Well, mostly because Pankus would own, the town would have to give up the property to, uh. You know.
I can't, I can't speak for Jason, but I think a lease is also possible.
Well, let's see how the, uh. Nonprofit works, so. I mean, you work so diligently.
But we, this is gonna cost. Like nine hundred thousand dollars for three houses. Right, that's not gonna satisfy the need out here.
That's very true.
That's true, you know, there's a huge need.
But do you have to build three? Three hundred thousand dollar homes?
We could go over the numbers sometime if you want. I know you have a huge agenda. I don't wanna take too much of your time, but. Bringing them out here on the island transporter with the crane, having well drilled septic systems.
Are you talking about bringing out modular homes?
Yes, oh, I see. The cost, you start adding that up, it was shocking to us.
But there's probably some savings when you do with them all at once.
Well, if you're drilling three wells, you might. More things at once, usually you can save.
It'd be great if we had, you know, a pager with one well and if we could put in one huge septic system, but there's no guarantee for any of that.
Right.
And of course, we'd be coming to the town asking for town owned land, cause you know, we're, we have to have land to build on. So, you know, it's not a slam dunk if we become a nonprofit. It's just another opportunity.
Right.
The local control is important for the island, I'm sure, and not losing the ability. Or not, not looking forward to having Knox County fill it with, uh, people who we probably don't want on the island.
What would make you think that that would happen?
History has a way of proving itself.
I mean, most of the people who live in the apartments are from here. They have federal money.
You really think that's gonna happen on the Pinker's project? It doesn't matter.
See the difference too, as that says, they have the, um.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind.
Whereas it's a city.
If someone raised some money to build a house over here, I don't know how the lawyers feel about it. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I, I don't think it hurts to run it by lawyers.
I, I agree.
Yep. I mean, I don't think there will be, it's a, it's gonna be a separate entity, so. It should be fine, but I don't, I don't, I don't think it hurts. Uh, do you want that piece of paper back?
So you don't wait for another two weeks? So it will take at least two weeks, right?
The next meeting is two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
We could say it. If the lawyers think it looks okay, we could give Marjorie permission to sign it in the interim if everyone felt comfortable.
You won't have to vote on it. Oh, you mean you would vote on it now?
I think let's just wait. Two weeks doesn't make that.
We wanted to, you know, get moving forward and get our application and I can't send the application until I have this done.
Right.
Or else we won't have the opportunity to do workforce housing. We could send it in without that. We could get approval. We can send it in later.
When is it due?
It basically just says in this document that we're relieving the government burden of trying to provide housing.
No, but I'm asking like, it seems like you have a deadline for something. Is there a grant?
There's, there's federal and state money that's available now, and we were going, as soon as we got our nonprofit status, we were gonna apply.
Okay.
Cause we have numbers, you know, for modular houses and stuff.
Not everything has to be an emergency.
I just think it's really better for us to, we feel better to have the lawyer.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
And so the other thing was, I think, um. Tonight you were gonna say when we might have the public meeting for the community to discuss what they wanna do with the net factory site.
Yeah, we didn't talk about it.
I'm not gonna schedule anything. I just, I don't personally think it's a very good idea. I think you need to go back and look at the. Master, downtown master plan, read the sections about the net factory property and, um. Try to follow what the, the downtown master plan says about forming, uh, a group. I know that. It says that we will form a committee. I still think that we need to do that. Um, you know, I'm sorry that that hasn't happened yet, but I would really like to develop a forming document. We have. Um, policies and procedures in place and, and that's what I would like. I would prefer to go back to our, um, master plan. Uh, do what the master plan suggested, form the group. Have a, have a good forming document for that committee about what the goals of that committee are. And, um. What we, what we wanna get out of those, uh. The committee work and the public meetings. I just think having a knee jerk reaction and having some public meeting without some structure, I think it's a bad idea. Cause we, we have a master plan, we have, uh, a section in our master plan that talks about the net factory and what the plan is. Uh, going forward with that committee. Certainly, I'm not. I'm not the board of selectmen, but. I just, I don't think that we always have to have this knee jerk reaction to everything and just. Have a public meeting. What is the goal? What would be the goal of this meeting? Just for. People to come and give random ideas about what they think than that factory property. You know, I think it should be more. Uh, focused and, and well thought out and. Go along with what the master plan says. That's what I think.
I read that section today. And specifically, the last paragraph on page fifty nine addresses that, um, and quite frankly, I agree with Marjorie. They specifically, um, think it was, you know, after all that hard work, that we really should. Have a committee formed, um. And let them. Look at the building, make decisions, you know, and their thoughts, and then bring it to the town. If you read that section in the master plan. It's, uh, what was fifty three to fifty nine, but the last paragraph on page fifty nine specifically addresses. The need to have a former committee, and it made perfect sense.
I agree with you and Marge as well.
And considering what the, um, two thousand fourteen report, the, um, engineer report. The building was about ready to fall down back then. So this is ten, almost ten years later. I just think that we would be wise to follow the, the. Initiative of the master plan personally.
So let's get setting up a group then, or how do we go about doing that, I guess? Like, if that's what it wants us to do, then.
You can do that now or as soon as possible.
Advertise to see if anyone's interested in being in that. Committee.
I'll, I'll start to prepare the, um. I forget what they call it. It's when we form a committee, it's a forming document that spells out. What the goals of the committee are, how many people are on, you know. Yes, the scope of the committee, uh, you know, not to just. Throw bodies into a group. You know, I really think that it needs to be more focused and, uh, I'll start to put together that document. Uh, so that you can, uh, we can. Move forward with this. Obviously, it's become. You know.
We talk about it every meeting.
Yes, we do.
Have you guys read the, any of the master plan?
I've read the whole thing.
I have not.
Remember that paragraph on page fifty nine?
I remember reading it and saying, really don't tell me anything.
I did read the report, the net factory report that Marge sent. I did read that from twenty fourteen or thirteen. I did read that.
We shouldn't have this be a. Free committee, we could put it.
Well, we certainly have time to get a committee together.
But then we shouldn't just give them.
State reuse.
An open ending. We should put a deadline on it. So much time. I mean, we, we don't want them to take. Five years to get back to us. We want it to be like a six month.
Well, we haven't even started the project.
No, I'm just saying, when we get, when we do get to forming a committee, it should have a deadline.
That'll be part of the.
Yeah.
Forming. That's an independent schedule, I think, from the other anyway, when it comes to deciding what to do with that. Obviously, we know what the master plan is. And we just figure out how does that property tie in in the best possible way? And that work to be done immediately.
Would do.
Right.
Yeah, well, thank you.
See you in two weeks.
I don't know about that.
All right, eight, old business. A land use violation, one forty two P plot in Cripple Creek. Who wants to start?
I don't know.
Anybody wanna be clear on what the subject is exactly?
Yeah, there, I didn't know there was a violation.
I don't know.
It's just listed here. That's what it's, I'm not saying there is a violation.
Okay.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. The way you said it, I thought.
Nope. There, I'm just reading what's on the agenda. I am not aware of anything other than what is on this agenda. Is there anything to present?
What was the last?
Do you have anything to present?
What was the last? Wasn't someone supposed to come up with a review? I can't even remember. It's been so long since.
You had emailed me and asked me to put it on the agenda because of the email from Ellen Ellis often.
Oh, from the last.
From a few weeks ago.
Yes.
Was there any violation issue in the last?
Yes, there was.
I don't, I don't have.
I put a stop work order as of yesterday for the garage that is running.
This is the stop work order?
Yeah, we don't.
There's nothing written on the stop order. Stop doing.
It says the commercial zone permit, and that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Those specific languages that what to stop doing.
Part of it to you first is.
Well, I mean, that's.
But we're not even really running a garage.
I'm just gonna say, you said something about commercial zoning earlier and there's no. Permit to get something commercially zoned. That's part of, that's part of the. Like. The town votes on that in the conference of plan. There's some areas that are zoned. Residential Marine One, there's some areas that are commercial, and I'm guessing that you guys are in just R M one or R two, I'm not sure. R M one, so, I mean, that's not a commercial zone, so I don't know, when you were saying about something about a commercial zone permit, I don't. Really know what, I, that, I'm not really all up to date on all those things, but I don't know what a commercial. I'm pretty sure that we as a, or the planning board can't give out a commercial zone permit in a non-commercial.
For some reason, I thought we were commercials though, from what Chandler used to tell me. Because of the granite, pouring, there was, I, I don't even know how it was all put up, but I know that that area. And with my grandfather, yes, Ed Wentworth, was commercials of Grandpa Street. I just, we automatically, I know that a while ago, I was told it was commercial zone. So now I was just trying to figure out, when we got this. I'm kinda questioning, what's commercial zone?
Right.
What do you have to do? I, I don't have a clue, and so that's why I've kinda brought this to you guys, cause I don't know.
Well, if it's not commercially zoned, then the, they'd have to change that from residential to commercial. Of the planning.
Right, but see, that's what we're trying to, I don't even know what's. I thought we were commercial zoned and now.
There's residential, commercial.
Residential Marine. One acre.
Is there even a commercial zoned area on the island?
Yes, down street.
So it's residential Marine one, okay. And I, I would take it to mean that the permit would be for the garage, not the, not the.
It's not. See, that's what I mean. When it was written up, commercial zone. Permit.
Yeah.
The way it's written, that's why I was, I don't get it. That's what, that's me.
I, I'm trying to figure out what the stop work order is for.
I mean, because we're really not.
Please?
No longer run the business out of there.
What business?
We're not running a business.
What business?
The business of playing would ask you to table until you get all the permits in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tina Blackington. Whose name is on that? And not running any business. What is out of that garage for a profit?
And I'll even said to stop everything until we could get. I'll even said, Mom, I don't wanna do anything until we are ready to connect, to collect on. So, when he decides to change tires for somebody, even a sister friend or whatever, like he was Adam Fishman's friend. And he fixed Cape and Earth's truck. Do I supposed to do something about him fixing her suburban down there in the parking lot? That's what, whatever. I'm still trying to figure out this because we're not running a garage, we're not trying to. Charge anybody. I'm trying to figure out, she says. We need a commercial zone permit. From, from that paper, that's what I got.
What is the, what is the permit for to build the shop or whatever it was?
They asked for a permit. They asked for a permit to have a. Auto repair shop. And the slutman has asked, the slutman, the planning board has asked them to do finding of facts. About different stuff, and so is the planning board and myself doing finding of facts.
Right.
We have a chapter seven hundred. Which is right here.
Yeah, I see that on the bottom.
Yeah.
DP, I don't know.
The D P, I think we were supposed to wait for, which, you know, that's what we're waiting for to make sure that we're not too.
I talked to. The D P said.
The D P said that. Chapter seventeen covers everything.
The chapter seven hundred.
Seven hundred, sorry.
I'll pass them.
Okay, good. I think I gave enough for everybody, maybe not.
I don't need one.
And I highlighted some of the stuff. But this is.
So they, do they, do they act? They, you guys actually have a permit to build something?
You have a permit to build the shop, yeah.
They have a permit to build a shop, but not a commercial garage. Anybody can have a personal garage on their property, but not for business.
Unless it's been permitted.
Right, unless it's been permitted and. At several planning board meetings, we've had the discussion where we're not, we're doing it, but we're doing it for donations. And.
Nobody should.
So anyway, they're doing it for donations.
That's a lie, babe.
Can we, can we just?
I'm not gonna have Benny Grant lying.
No, I know, but you know, I really don't think the select board. Can really do much. To help you guys because what the planning board, it would seem to be.
Their domain, yeah.
Where you need to talk about this because we can't do anything.
We're separate from that. We can't approve permits.
Whether or not there's actually a violation to saying that there is. But that's going to progress into convincing you that you should be taking me back to court.
No, 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 don't you jump into conclusions, and I don't think we need to do that. I feel that. Personally, again, my recommendation would be for you. Folks to go back to the planning board and wait for the next time you go, whatever, whenever that is, and proceed with them because.
Okay.
It's nothing we can do.
All right, I think what we were worried about is that we're we're seeing, we're hearing the violate violation. And so we don't want to be taken back to court and a contempt. And that kind of thing, and we're trying to make sure that that's not on the table. To prevent anything from the permits, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's like everything's kind of connected. And I think that's where we're at on that. So.
As far as the permit permitting goes on page three. At the bottom, there is some variances from this U E P commission. The applicant may go to the commissioner and. Provide certain safety instructions or safety measures. Where the D E P commissioner may grant a variance to Title seven hundred. That would be something that would be done between the applicant, the lead and Isles and the D E P. Thus far, the town has not produced any setback. Verberage on the book that restricts us from operating that business. This is the only document. And that's the path we're taking. We're going to seek the variance from the D E P.
Okay. So I mean, that, that's.
Dana asked me for the verbiage on whether he could or not, and you see on page one. This paper, when it talks about the distance, there is a page two. Gone over this so many times. That's three hundred feet of water. From drinking water.
Three hundred feet from a private well, a thousand feet from a public water supply.
Right. So it's right there on page three. And he gets right about variances, but very just felt to vary. I talked to D E P today and asked about that after seeing Dana's email that stated. Variance, but he didn't highlight or state any of the other stuff that I highlighted for auto repair. And there is wells within three hundred feet. We also have Grant's Pond, and we also have Booth's Quarry. So there's a lot of water around there.
Booth's Quarry is three hundred and ninety-two feet.
And I'm still thinking this is part of the D E P and they are.
All right, well, I don't, I don't understand.
Hold, hold on, hold on, hold on, so if this, sorry, please. If. This. Variance is to be submitted to the, to the D E P.
Right.
This board has no control over that. If it has been submitted to them, we will let them handle it. If they say yes, they say no, then you move on from there.
Right, I think the stop a work order at the bottom of it, it said something about wait for the D E P. I'm assuming that's what the planning board is.
I think what I was confused on is where it says the. You know, zoning thing, it's not because of zoning, and I was trying to figure out. How do I get a zone commercials though, you know, I'm just getting like, that's where I'm at.
And again, that would, that would also be another question for the point.
Okay, so that's on the planning board, okay.
If it has to do with. Permitting all that stuff is the, the planning board, my understanding correct. We, we do not handle that.
Okay.
I just have one more question, and that is to pay, and that is what evidence do you have? That we are conducting business.
I have pictures of different cars, and I've had the license plates for different cars have been there. You worked on them, done tires and stuff, and I've had many people call up and complain about the amount of traffic and the. Monocars working on, like one day there was somebody with a leg standing, uh going outside the car, they were working underneath it. I just had many, many, many complaints.
I think that was my trial. Isles to hang my uh muscular back up.
I'd just like to.
All right.
I'd just like to have the board understand that we have to write, we're working on friends' cars. Or relatives' cars, anybody else's cars on this island as long as I do not charge them.
Right. Minutes that he asked for donations.
What's that?
All of this is for the planning board. Yeah.
Yep, this isn't a board, this isn't.
Not a board, selectmen.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for bringing.
Back to court, we're happy for that.
The planning board should be taking up all of that, that's. But are we ready to move on?
On, please.
Well. I have all my documentation here. I have tons of it. I've made copies for everybody if they ever want to see them.
I will take copies. I mean, I don't know exactly what he wants, what we're supposed to be doing. We're not the planning board.
Right, just to know what's going on.
I mean, if there's a stop work order, then they have to stop work. Till it gets played up with the planning board, right?
Yeah.
Isn't that how a stop work order goes? Yeah, so obviously, if you just gave it to them today, they.
I mean, I think.
Well, whatever day it was, but that planning board hasn't met, they won't meet till next month, right?
Here was just to make sure that we weren't. They weren't in contempt. It's the way I understood it.
Well, we didn't tell them that, we didn't.
Went out of control from there.
I mean, I don't know what's going on, but if they just got annoyed yesterday, then no. They're supposed to wait for all those things at the bottom, and that. My mind, if someone tells you just. That's what you do, that's what you know, but we're not the ones that have anything to do with it. The only thing we had to do is we hired Fay, and she's doing her job.
Right.
And then that goes to the planning board, that's what they're likely to do, so I don't, it's nothing to do with us, as far as I'm concerned, not at this point.
May I speak out of turn? I usually do. Chen, uh at the planning board meeting, we had lots of stuff set, and I gave him a documentation that can give you that. About all of stuff he needed to do. And he refused to do it, and then email in there saying that we need to do it. Here is the documentation which I.
This is from a planning board.
This is from the planning board meeting. Dana is very worried that we're gonna take him back to court, and that I've asked for more money. In the budget for attorney fees to take him back. That's what he is scared of.
So that's what he was talking about, that nineteen was up here.
That would kick, that D W and I asked for more money.
That, that was so we could get through the fiscal year with our.
We, we did ask for more.
Yeah, well, the town has a lot of lawyer things we have.
This doesn't pertain to him.
We still have, we have other things that we have to pay lawyers for.
We have, we have many.
Focus was not on.
Imagine one person. Having a lawyer bill, imagine it being for. Three thousand people worth is what the town basically is, so I mean, there's always stuff coming up for lawyers. Marjorie's gonna be getting a little bit more, but lawyer bill asking about that form. I mean, there's all kinds of things we do both, but every time. Without them sometimes.
Well, I'm gonna try main municipal.
Okay, but I'm just saying that there's a lot of reasons that we lose lawyers that we need more money for, so, yeah.
Even if I would like to move along if we said please.
Yes, I want to go home.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Fay.
Ryan upside, he was on the agenda. Next.
He got up and.
Well, I just didn't know if he was just outside stretching his leg. I assumed he probably did. Yeah, well, if he's out there, just.
Thank you.
You too. Or I mean, enjoy your, your drink when you go home. That's what I meant to say.
Um I was just curious about the, and I know he's not here, but I just had one question about. The amount. North Haven, um. Agreed to pay monthly. Does that, is that um for so many hours, or is that just what, I mean, is?
Well. Uh when Rick Latimer and I originally talked. It was more on the line of, you know, that they would pay for Ryan's hourly wages for the hours that he worked for North Haven, but. Ryan and I talked and. He just said that it would be very difficult to, you know, have a time sheet and, uh you know, um. Put down each. Put down time when he was exclusively working for North Haven, because doing this, it made it administrative work for. Both North Haven and Vinyl Haven, a lot of it will be done concurrently, you know, if, so, um. We went back and, you know, talked more with Rick and felt like it would be better to just have some sort of monthly stipend, and they offered five hundred. And I had done some calculations, and that was well, and you know. I thought it was generous in terms of the calculations that I had done in terms of the number of hours. We thought that it would. You know.
And we can negotiate afterwards if we so choose to do so.
Yeah, and if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but it, Ryan is open to it. Um I think it's a good way for. Uh North Haven and Vinyl Haven to collaborate on something. Uh which is, uh you know, we've got a couple of other things that we're trying to collaborate on, some uh grant. Proposals that will eventually come back to the board, but. Um, yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea.
I do too. I was just curious about.
A couple of years ago, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Like a couple of years ago, we were trying to get ten people so they could do a class out here. If you were in contact with them up there, might be easy to do. Things like that, that I mean, would benefit both islands and.
Right.
So I mean, if he's administrator for both islands, he'd know and be able to schedule it.
Right.
I don't, I don't see how it hurts anyone, I mean.
And he was.
Yeah, I mean.
He, he agreed to it. If he agrees to it, then I'm.
We're not forcing more work on him, he's.
It says here, either party has the right to terminate within thirty, giving other party thirty days, so it's.
So um the motion should also ask that um or uh should give me the authority to sign. The memorandum of understanding, please.
All right, I make a motion that. We authorize Marjorie to sign. Sorry, memorandum of agreement. For vinyl have north air EMS director services. Second. All's in favor. All right. Thank you for working on that.
We're good on it.
Yes.
It is a good idea.
All right. Then, budget workshop. Make this quick, sub-explain seven.
We must be almost done, aren't we?
Playoffs. The playoffs just started.
I did get the school budget as well. And even with the school budget in there, it's up about two point eight percent on that final page.
That's which.
But the, on this.
The color of this one.
This one.
Okay.
So on the last page of that one, you'll see I did get the school budgets. Overall, the, or the overall budget at the bottom is up two point five. The school budget is up two point eight. Percent, which I didn't think was too bad.
Not on their salaries, from their contract, probably calls for. Three percent or something every year.
They just signed a new contract like last year, right?
Yeah, but I mean, usually you get. So many percent.
Yeah, it's built into their contract.
I didn't know how much detail you wanted to go into, but you had mentioned, I had taken quite a bit out of fund balance. To keep the uh taxation down. Um but at the last, the last time we spoke, you. You're kind of um talking, you were talking about using less of the fund balance. And and. Did you have any um thoughts about that?
Well, first, how much of the fund balance? Is in this budget now?
Six hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Okay, what were you proposing? We had over three million.
That's what she's proposing to you.
We have like over three million, correct?
Yeah.
Towards the back of the packet, which was the one.
Oh, this one here, all right. Thank you.
A long one.
This.
The fold out.
This. And not eight by eleven. Well, because when you go to print selection, it has standard is eight and a half by eleven, so that's the only reason I know that. And I used to have to print out. Things on paper like this.
Yeah, I don't think I got, I don't have it.
Yeah.
Maybe it's somewhere else on the.
Oh, I got six fifty-three.
It's, it was before, it was right behind the. The uh town manager or four, it's not stapled in, it's separate.
So if we didn't use that fund balance.
So this one point four millions at the bottom, Marjorie, is that how much the fund balance is currently, or is that after reading?
We currently seem to have those papers with me. Um, my calculation was such that we have about three and a half million in undesignedated fund balance, which. You know, as I said, is an excellent, like a dream, you know, that's half of our. Um tax commitment. Um we were not uh completely done with the twenty twenty-two audit. Right, but I did a um cursory calculation using the uh twenty twenty-two trial balance. So I, you know. The, the calculation that I did for um taxation came up to. But again, I don't know what the total values are gonna be. Yet, so it's difficult to really pinpoint what the um.
What if we use the six hundred thousand, we're still gonna have close to three million in fund balance?
Yes.
Two million, seven hundred ninety-five thousands.
Is um.
Oh, yeah, I'm way ahead.
What I can do is just do a few um. Uh a few proposals about, you know, when I get closer to what I have for um. Total valuation and plug in all of the revenues. Come up with a di- a few different scenarios of how it will affect the tax rate. You know, I mean, I'm still working on doing the warrant, you know, even if if this is the final thing, I can. We can still change that fund balance figure based on some of the estimates that I can, I can do a few different scenarios. With the different amounts, using different amounts of fund balance and how that will affect taxation.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to see if we used.
Well, I mean, if the valuation goes up by ten percent, then we won't have to change the military by much using.
Oh, here's my. So this one, this one um calculation that I did. Using the current figures. Came up with the. What do we have? We're at eleven point seven one mil rate now. And this one, this one sample, it goes to twelve point one five, which is, you know, not that much of a change. But um.
Is that with using the same valuation or?
Yeah, same value as last year, because that's all I really.
That's the number you know. That's the number we have. I'd do that known number rather than guessing what might be.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to use that, but um.
Well, it's not gonna go down.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is I could adjust the fund balance figure. To see how that affects taxation.
Yeah, right.
And at different levels.
Yes, because if we can use less of the fund balance, I think we should.
Yes.
Which we all agree, but.
But I mean, we know, we know the valuation is gonna go up some, but not, we don't know what. Probably the number is, so I mean. If if we're getting twelve, twelve dollars and fifteen cents using last year's. Using the fund balance that we're using now, I feel it'll be closer.
Same.
I'm I'm assuming if we go down. The five hundred thousand on fund balance, then it would probably still be twelve dollars and fifteen cents on the millerie.
Right, or what if we went like half of it, it was three twenty five, it's supposed to be sixty, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could just see those different scenarios.
Down to twelve dollars and for everyone be.
Also, if you, you know, when you take this home, if you see anything that doesn't jive or you have questions on it, just please get back to me. I did meet uh, the uh, a few times with the budget committee and. Uh, I put, you know, if they approved a particular budget, I did put in there that they approved it. Um.
In this packet?
Right, on this paper, it says budget committee.
Oh.
If the budget committee approved it. You know. I put the figures that they approved on that line.
Under the B C column.
B C means budget committee.
So like in planning.
So they approved everything.
In planning and community development, they obviously haven't looked at it cuz they haven't plugged in any numbers there, is that right?
At the end of our last meeting, uh, I just said, well. I mean, it's, it's so far, it's um, so much lower than the previous year that they said they were fine with it, but we, they didn't vote. All the other ones they voted on, but they did have a chance to look at it briefly at the end of the last meeting.
But there weren't any, so they didn't have any. Doesn't look like they voted against.
No.
Anything.
Well, they s- they had a lot of questions and some things I tweaked after I talked with the budget committee.
Hmm.
Um, you know, they looked at line by line items and, you know, had, we had really good discussions. I was really happy to have them uh, look closely at everything, you know.
I appreciate that too.
Yeah. Um. It was Margaret Quailey and Bill Alcorn, Banner Moffett and Eric Davis. So there was a lot of good questions and um. We had a few, I don't know, four or five meetings, I think.
Great.
So only done once.
Even using, if we didn't use no fund balance, we're still probably gonna be like.
If we just use last year's valuation, go over there, then you can always adjust the millerie when you finally get the number for that.
Oh, yeah, they will.
But uh, that way we got, I think we got it covered and uh. Why, why are you suggesting not using any fund balances here?
I'm not saying we don't, I'm just wondering what is the difference if we haul back a little bit on it?
How will uh, the taxation?
I mean, if.
Well, I didn't know if you were trying to save it for another year or there's gonna be.
Well, we do have, there's gonna be a paving project at some point. We're gonna need a lot of money for that.
I was wondering what you had.
Like if we have.
Back of your mind because that's kind of what I was thinking.
We have three, three point five million, that's probably could all go to the roads, it wouldn't fix a whole bit, so. That's, that's.
No, I was just kinda, that was my question, like what, what, what are you?
Cuz if we didn't use any fund balance this year, we'd be up maybe what, five, five and a half percent? That's still pretty good considering inflation was double that, so.
Oh, yeah, I said, I mean. Well, I think we build a fund balance.
We're gonna have to build the roads.
Do a one shot deal with.
Yeah, if we could, if we could cut.
If we could cut the fund balance in half of what we're using now and still get away with. Less than five percent budget increase, that probably wouldn't. Riles anyone up too bad.
I hope not.
So I'm gonna start writing the warrant articles and one of the things, uh, I don't know if you remember or not, that. Um. Last year, we voted to borrow a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do some renovations. And we're not gonna, on the fu- on the public safety building.
Yep.
And we're not gonna do that anymore.
Right.
So I asked um, our bond counsel. You know, what the options are with that. And we can go back to town meeting and change the purpose of that borrowing, or we can rescind the borrowing. And if we don't, if we don't do anything at all. I mean, it just stays there as um, approved and unissued uh, dad.
Okay.
So it's not, you know, of any detriment to the town. Um, there was some thought to. Uh, changing the purpose of it, but I wondered what your thoughts were.
But that's what we discussed last time cuz we were gonna purchase a new fire truck, correct? Which we put in an order for and they have to pay in two years probably. So I thought the plan was to take that one fifty and.
Yeah.
Really, change the purpose to purchasing a fire truck.
It's still in the by the pump. I was, so we're just gonna put it in the reserve for now or just wait until we have to borrow.
I would say we wait cuz hopefully interest rates go down.
Change the purpose.
Change the purpose, but I don't know.
And change, and change the. Date when we have to go out to. Cuz if we don't use it, if they give us permission, do we have to use it by the next? It's, it's all we can use it when.
You can, you can.
Alright, I was just wondering if it would run out, if it would run out next June or, you know, that's what I was asking if you need to put a longer date, it's gonna be two years.
Mentioned it, there, the uh. You remember when you, we voted to borrow um. Town voted to borrow seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for paving, but you only borrowed two hundred and sixty four, four hundred. So the remaining amount of that approval. Um, come on, you're good at figuring into that.
It's about four hundred and ninety. Would you say seven fifty to two sixty four?
It's about four ninety, forty six.
So that amount is still available to borrow. That four hundred and some odd dollars.
Yeah, the reason that you, the reason that was so low is we were gonna have a lot of extra roads done, but they ran out of time because the ferry schedule. Couldn't get as much tar already at that time.
Yeah.
And we didn't get, we were gonna pave like some of these side streets and that's why it came in so much lower, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
Ooh, I have.
But we'll need. Oh, so that's good.
Two eighty five, six hundred.
Almost five hundred.
Almost five hundred K.
That we can borrow for roads if something, I mean, that road, that road to the dump is a problem horrible.
Wow, it's a nightmare.
That one might need just engineering work first that.
Yeah, that, they have that, yeah, we could use, yeah, we could use that.
Yeah, that's like that, that's gonna have to be done first, so.
But I mean, there's no sense to do it till after the. Project of the dumps done running, those heavy trucks over there just running.
Yeah.
That's true.
And it's probably good that we didn't have anything done.
Oh, yeah.
With all those big trucks running over there, it was so soft, it would have just regulated.
Now, not the time to borrow money.
No.
Wait, that's what, we can wait.
Yeah, I was thinking next year at this time, hopefully, it'll be down. Coming down at half, maybe.
And materials will fill.
Do you have any other questions about, I mean, certainly if you take those documents home and you see something that looks odd to you, reach out, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
A good job getting the budget committee active and doing this stuff, I think that's the appropriate way to go.
Thank Margaret Quailey. She was really the, you know, the one that um, got together and scheduled meetings.
Yeah.
Thank you, Margaret.
I, I think people should get credit where credit is due. I, I'm, I can't give the credit.
It's, it's a good thing, I like.
Thank you, Margaret. Yeah, thank you, Margaret.
Yes, thank you. Alright, let's move on. Enough, there's more questions in the budget.
You know, it's hard, Margaret. Well, thank you.
We'll move on to eleven, report town manager.
Well, I did give you a budget report. This is in your um, packets for the current year that we're in, we're at seventy five percent. Uh, I don't see any problems. Of course, we already know about the professional services. But there's still a little bit left in that account. We're at eighty five instead of seventy five. But I don't see any problems on any of the other current year budget items.
What's the travel and transportation under ambulance? It's. I know it's not a big number, but percentage wise, it's.
Where?
Under ambulance and then the travel and transportation line. We budgeted eight twenty five, but we've already spent twelve hundred. Again, not a dollar, figured it's big, it's just percentage visors. There obviously has been more travel and transportation.
It looks like maybe it was to fix the vehicle cuz that's also over by seventeen hundred.
Hmm.
Was there a repair done? To one.
Yes, a big repair.
Yeah.
So it's ambulance?
Yeah, under ambulance.
And obviously last. Last year when we did the budget, we didn't know the gas price is gonna be five dollars, so that one's obviously over a little bit. Not, I mean, it's only three hundred and something dollars. When we put the budget together last January.
Yeah, last year.
I was just thinking it would be three or four dollars and then it went up.
Uh, we paid um. The uh, expense, a thousand dollars expense for um. Ryan.
Oh, to come out, yes, okay, alright, that was money well spent.
Yeah. That's what that is.
I did notice one thing there though, and I, it's very minor, but I, I think we ought to clean it up. We have a whole. We have a large number of uh, entries for get, for get fuel and gas in there and a whole bunch of different prices.
I wanna report it?
Per gallon. Might be nice to have more in the budget and the right now.
Okay.
So hard to predict.
Hmm.
It's so hard to predict those prices though.
That's what I'm saying, but I think there should be one number.
Right, no, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, well, last year we, no one was gonna predict five dollars a gallon or somewhere, and that would have been low probably. If we predicted it, we predict, I'm sure we.
Well, I think this year didn't we plan at five?
I'm thought, this year we did buy, last January.
Well, prices are now what, three forty?
On the mainland, four thirty here.
Okay, so we're.
They hit, they did hit five dollars on the mainland last spring, so.
They did, yeah.
Right now, it's four thirty on, I mean, uh, three, three thirty or three twenty on the mainland, four thirty here.
Yeah. Um.
Uh, anyway, so that's the budget report, right?
Is um. Were they not compacting the crash anymore? Is that gonna affect the? Budget for transporting the. Uh, the transfer station cuz we're gonna have to do more loads, right?
It may, you know.
Is it, it's not gonna have a big effect though, you don't think?
I just don't know, you know, I. I think that we're, that Ken and Luther are doing a good job finding this, keep everything together and find a place and keep the recycling people happy and. Um, yeah.
Just didn't know who's gonna, how much of an effect it would have because I mean, I'm assuming that wherever we're getting half the tonnage in, so.
Are you talking about the tax maps?
There'll be more runs is what.
Yeah, it's gonna be more, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the town manager, Marjorie Stratton, to sign change orders to vinyl haven transfer station project. If the total cost does not exceed the budget as approved January seventeenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. And. This on the tax map update, yes, um. But other options.
Yeah, I mean, Travis and I talked a lot about this last week and we called uh, the GIS coordinator at Knox County. And I talked with the assessor over in North Haven and, and he and I are just kinda shocked at this cost, uh, you know, this, it's a three year project at two hundred sixty seven thousand. But we keep coming back to this company CAI. You know, everybody is using this company and um. What Letitia in Knox County and what um, Tammy up at uh, in North Haven, they're telling me is that. You've gotta have a good base to start with and we don't even have a starting point. So. In order to get to that. Starting point, we have to have these, this planometric base map, which means doing uh. You know, flying over and doing like this Google map thing. And I know I don't speak the language and I apologize for that, but. Um, we keep, you know, we'll, we'll talk about other companies and. We, uh, there are a couple of companies that were interested, but then they, they didn't wanna come out, they didn't wanna deal with vinyl havens.
Shocker.
Yeah, and uh. The more we talk to people, the more, you know, every, um, uh, every town in the mid coast that we talk to are, is with this CAI, so. Uh, Travis is gonna be here again this week, um. We can use the ARPA funds. What I would suggest is on this warrant and uh, we don't, you know, you're, you're not approving the warrant tonight, but I think I'm gonna. Try to draft an article that says that, that authorizes the town to use the ARPA funds for tax map updates. You know, something like that, so at least we'll get that on the books to, um, and then when we decide who we're gonna contract with. We'll have that money um, at least earmarked uh, for the tax map updates. So I will, I'm, I'm planning on doing an article like that. Uh, to at least get that in place. And Travis and I will be talking more this week and we'll come back with a proposal and I just. I think any way we look at it, um, we're gonna be spending a substantial amount of money and there are differing opinions on it, but I. Um, and. Again, he and I were shocked at the amount, but. We keep coming back to, well, maybe this is just what we need to do. I'm afraid if we don't, if we only go halfway, so to speak. That we'll eventually have to do this.
Hmm.
And then, and then, and then it'll cost more.
Right.
Um.
And what is it, what is this gonna give us? This isn't. One. House by house and assessing them, this is just a tax map.
It's not an assess, this is, this is our tax maps. Um, and if you can maybe just click on uh, North Haven website and go to their tax maps, get a example.
They've done it?
Hmm.
They've already done this?
Yes, they did it back in. Uh, twenty fourteen.
So is it? Say we went with this proposal, it's three years, do you have to pay it all front or is it pay as you go?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be talking a couple of budget years. We have about a year worth with the ARPA funds.
So they did theirs in twenty fourteen. And back then, they paid um, forty six thousand, but they. They uh, they only have seven hundred parcels. We have uh, almost two thousand parcels, so I mean.
Three times as much.
Yeah.
Still not, yeah, completion, I guess.
Well, let's redraw the lines that we have and like, we have the.
Well, actually create new tax.
Other new maps.
Yeah.
They'll be a lot more accurate than your old ones.
It will be, you know. You'll see everything, um.
So is this, would this be, is it more like a, this is a. A big expenditure now and then it's kind of less to maintain moving forward.
Five thousand a year to maintain.
Okay.
And everybody I talk to um. Has wonderful things to say about this com- company, so it's. Uh, they talk about the planometrically accurate maps that show planometric detail and other general features. Uh, it's a two dimensional map that serves as a guide for contour mapping. Uh, usually prepared from aerial photography, so it'll show. Uh, roadway features, sidewalks, streets, highways, alleys, curb lines, pavement lines. General feature details such as building footprints, reservoirs, tanks, docks, piers, airports, bridges. You know, in other, in other words, it'll create. Uh, much more detail.
Very comprehensive tax maps.
Yeah.
Planometric, I like that word.
Uh. Marjorie, does it, what, what, what does it use for uh, for the data on property lines?
Surveys.
So they're going back to what, what, do we, we have a pretty good database on the actual property line? Uh, that, that's a hacks map on the Knox County, they incorporate all that into it?
Yes, uh, let's see. After scanning and organizing the source documents, staff will compile the parcels and right of ways onto. The most accurately available base map. And that's what they're talking about, this base map. Uh, once all the parcels are compiled, see compiled, CAI will create a new set of tax maps with appropriate scales, enabling display of dimensions and acreages. Um, parcels would be renumbered using a standard tax map numbering procedures, blah, blah, blah. Um. And he is willing to come out and talk to you, you know, so that you can ask him questions, but um. Travis and I are gonna be asking him more questions um, this week.
But you said North Haven has already done this and they're still.
Uh, Rockland, Camden.
Okay.
Rockport, Warren.
They've got a pretty good monopoly on this.
Yeah.
In Knox County at least.
Everybody we talked to, it, it circles back around to this company.
Hmm.
Um.
Can I ask what the definition of that acronym is?
What is it?
Yeah.
CAI.
A R P A, what is that?
Oh, American Rescue. Something.
Act. Covid money.
The covid money, yeah.
Okay.
We have about a hundred and twenty thousand.
Right, I just take these act.
What did Knox County ever end up with there? Seven hundred thousand.
Seven million. Huh?
Seven million.
Seven million, sorry. I don't know.
They should give us two hundred and sixty seven thousand of our tax.
Hold on.
They, the talk was broadband and housing, I thought, and they're also gonna use.
They gave a bunch of money for the Knox County jail.
EMS and.
Act.
Knox County shares.
Jeez. Thank you.
Uh, Marjorie, do you have anything else?
Um, no.
Alright, anybody have any more questions from Marjorie?
Oh, the, they, they did hire a deputy. I met him yesterday. Oh, the, they, they did hire a deputy, I met him yesterday.
So we're gonna have a second one?
No, we're gonna have one.
At this point.
At this point, I know of one that has definitely been hired, Matthew Cremoni, Cremoni, Cremoni.
I met him in the ferry terminal.
So then, so then he's gonna hopefully move out here with his family.
So we need to be talking about housing and what, how we're gonna manage this well.
His family is in South Carolina, right?
Cause we didn't have a deputy that lived out here, they just sent someone else every different weeks, right? With Chad for a while quite often and then some weeks there was no one in Johnson come down and do something, right?
Well, I happened to be in Rockland yesterday and Arthur was trying to get on there, yeah, and he had this person with him. Who was just in regular street clothes and we were chit chatting and he said, well, I gotta get him over there because he's your new deputy and I went. All time deputy, and I went, yeah, so that was.
So he's the one with the family, who really needs a family rental. Um, just along the way, Matt and I both had a uh correspondence from the. From the uh Knox County Police and the uh, and also from the state of Maine. And they're look, talking to the ferry service about actually renting that facility until such time, it's no longer available and they need to tear it down. So that, that discussion is taking place and in the process, but it is in fact a modular house. And there is a potential that they will sell it to the town for a dollar. We just moved it on to another location, so we ought to be thinking about, is something we wanna do? And if so, what would it take to do it and where to put it?
How much would it cost to move it?
That's what I don't know, if I'm saying these are the things we need to.
Why are they gonna tear it down if it's that good, why aren't they selling?
They need the space.
I understand that, but why are they not selling?
For a dollar.
No, I, yeah, but I mean.
The money to tear it down or move it or whatever.
If some, if it was in good shape, wouldn't they put a price on it for some, to sell it to some?
It's the state, okay?
No, but, and that's what I mean, is it, is it in good enough shape to even?
But it would be.
Yeah, but if it's worth uh fifty thousand dollars, that's.
No, I, I'm, I totally agree.
We should definitely look at it. Well, I, again, I think, you know, I'm, I've been talking to him and I'm prepared to work with him, what, if.
But do you want money in the budget? For some?
I think we should have, I think we should address how we're gonna do this and get an idea with the cost and I'm not sure we're ready for a number yet until we see what we have.
Okay.
It would, I mean, for this purpose, it wouldn't just be for the deputy though, this would be. But if this could end up being housing, of course, so it would be. But would it be in the budget?
Put it under law enforcement for now, I guess.
That's what I would do for the moment.
Right, but we need, we, I mean, we've gotta, we've gotta get the warrant written here, we gotta have it ready to go, I got, how much? We'd need an estimate like this week on what that will cost.
You know, Jake might be a good place to start on, what it will take to move it, but Knox County is gonna look at scene and make sure we'll. What they've done, but they, they were gonna look at it, I haven't heard back, I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not good enough, we'll, we'll, then to rent it, then there's no sense, I mean, not to move it for them anyway, I mean. If they're putting it out there that they would let someone in the town have it for a dollar and then we have first refusal. If we don't want it, would they still let someone else move it?
I don't know, that's a.
Well, someone else might wanna move it out here too, I mean, if they had a piece of land, I mean.
It would be under town property, I would think, eventually, yeah.
I don't know if that same, that same offer would be for an individual versus the town.
Yeah, well, we should just see what Knox County says and go from there again. One is their, what is their timeline?
Well, Margie, what, okay, if I call them, talk to Kurt, just see what they, where they are and I'll get back to you, let you know.
Well, the email said that there was somebody at the state level that was on vacation and they'd get back to Kurt.
Yeah.
When he got back.
But um, he, he was gonna look at it anyway, so that, the question is.
No, I don't, I mean, there, no, I'm, I'm fine with you calling, if the board is okay.
Yeah.
If we had to do this within this budget year. I don't know where we, I mean, there's a balance in under town property, because this would, it would be under town property, correct? The piece, building to a piece of property, town property. There's like sixty six K left in the budget, I don't know how much more we have to spend between now and.
Well, I'm asking like, is, is this even something that we have to move next year or would it be the next year's budget after that? They're gonna let them live there.
Yeah, the question is how long before they're gonna do, do their project? Get to the boards and say, okay, stop moving a little bit.
Yeah, we should do some investigating, don't make any promises, but we should definitely. If they, if they're willing to rent it in Knox County. You know, until they can find something more permanent, then that's fine, I think we should definitely investigate.
Put it to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Where we, where, if we went ahead with this.
I think you're a little bit further ahead than we need to be right now.
I know we own that property up by the airport, but that's might be too far of time.
I, I thought this was more like they're trying to, the state.
Donnie doesn't even know when they're gonna do the project.
The, the first step would be they would live in it where it is now, until the state was ready to move forward there.
Yeah, okay, alright, then I thought this is something we had to get it moved first.
We need to find what it will cost, I think we need to, do need to put it in the budget. For warrants and police.
I don't know when they, when they want it out of there, because it might not be until. Or someone else can put it in the next.
For this budget though, I don't think we have time for that, because we have, it has to be posted, what, thirty days before the meeting, is that correct? For the annual, the warrant has to be available for everyone to review.
Well, the annual town meeting, it's, that it gets printed in that, um.
The annual town forum.
Yeah, so that's.
That's coming up, right?
It's uh, the official posting of the warrant is seven days before the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Let's get the information and then we can go from there.
Alright. Right, if we have to do that and ask for money to do this, then we can do that, I'm sure, I'm gonna be, that, so, alright. So this budget, we won't worry about it.
I'll put together the plan and let you guys know what we, what we have.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright.
Do we need to? As long as we just verbally say that we're fine with Donnie making phone calls on our behalf, he doesn't need any kind of.
I mean, he's.
He's not really gonna enter in any contracts, he's just making backfounding, right?
He's part of the board, we've all discussed it.
Yeah, fine, I'm just making sure that there's any, like, he'll be all set to do that on his own.
Not obligated to do anything.
Right, yeah, I mean, we didn't say, oh, he can go sign, sign contracts, he just.
It sounds like he has that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, is there any, is there anything that we, should we make a motion or is it just fine? Can just legally, you can just backfind on our path, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure he's covered. Hey, I've worked uncovered a lot.
So I think we kind of already into this report of members, anything else?
I was just um looking at this email from Amy McDonald and about the, did you read it? What, what did we, I, we can't remember, what was the expense?
To us and I remember you especially were excited about it, but then when we looked into the grant, there was something that like, oh, this is more trouble than it's worth. Kind of, but I don't remember the specifics of our conversation.
Any of you remember?
I don't at all.
I just know that it was, sounded like a great idea and so we talked about it and then when we explored further, it was gonna cost. A lot of money or I just can't remember.
Why effort involved, I think, and it didn't seem worth it.
Right.
Why do we even need to do it?
Asking if anybody remembered what it involved and why we decided not to pursue it.
And what I was, what I was starting to say was, I've been looking at this because I've been thinking about doing it and I've actually wired my house for it. And the idea is, if the charging station, like it's set up in the town, is probably more for trangents that don't have a house or anything else. But if homeowner here has their two, two twenty wiring in the house. The, the actual equipment is minimal compared to them, so I don't think we even, for homeowner, I don't think we should even be discussing it.
We're not.
Well, my, my point, I agree.
They, they wanted to have a public charging station.
She wanted to know why we hadn't, why we don't moved on it, because after she talked to Phil, Phil said. We had this thing and so she just asked the question why we didn't, didn't you read the memo?
Yeah, I, I read, I read it, but.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to know if anybody could remember what the specifics were.
I don't remember.
Why we turned, decided not to.
I briefly tried to go through the minutes, but I couldn't find.
No, I just don't. Well, if it's anything like the one at the terminal in Rockland, it's always out of order.
Well, that one's working now. At the last few times I've seen vehicles there. So they say we aren't sure we can charge it at home.
You could trickle charge it anywhere, you, exactly, I've seen, I mean, I, I do a fair amount of travel and a lot of hotels don't have. Those fast things and you'll see people parked somewhere where there's an outlet outside and they'll just have them plug in, get a regular outlet, it just. It takes you a week to charge instead of overnight.
You know, forty five minutes and.
Right, but I'm just saying, if you're on violation overnight, you can charge longer than you can drive on.
They just have a, um. Something in their garage that they plug it into, that they, um.
Well, the school has an electric bus and I'm assuming that needs more charging than any normal car wouldn't. I haven't had it heard of any.
A lot about it, but I just know.
So what do you get, miles per kilowatt hour? I have no idea.
Depending on the bet, the size of the battery, because I've been looking into the Ford Lightning. You can get a smaller battery and you can go two hundred and fifty miles, you get the bigger one, you can go three fifty.
Oh, well.
Just, it also depends if, if you're towing something, you're gonna have less time and all that stuff, so, um. It depends, but yeah, most of those, if you're buying it, you're gonna spend the extra money to install a charger in your home.
Yeah.
And when you're traveling, that's when you use the public station, so someone coming out here. If they're just coming out here for the day and they're driving around electric vehicle, sorry, you're out of luck. Most likely they're coming out and they have a home and they can charge it.
Yeah.
So I think that's also part of why we didn't go ahead with it, because yes, there might be more of a need, but it's not for people who. But also, traveling through town, because you don't just travel through.
In ten years, it's gonna cost ten percent of what it does now to hook up one of those charges downtown, because. Just like a flat screen TV, they were ten thousand dollars and now they give them away at Black Friday at Walmart, so I mean.
Right.
The longer technology is around, the cheaper it's gonna get, there's no sense for us to rush in to something that hasn't been tested to, I think that was part of it, I'm. Starting to recall some of the conversation.
And also, I, yes, there's a push on the federal level to get people in electric vehicles and I'm, I'm all for it, but. Has anyone looked at the price of those electric vehicles, because they are not cheap.
No, environmentally friendly.
I'm planning on.
They basically are. Just the air will be cleaner, but the.
Sorry, yep, sorry, no, we have one more, alright, uh.
That was only if you needed it, we'll be, we didn't understand.
Okay, so then, uh, number fourteen, I move adjourned. All's favor, alright, thank you.
See, I called, I called Ford two years ago when they were having all this stuff about Ford Lightning, I said, can I? They get in on a list, they're like, no.